We'll call to order the City of Douglasville's City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, September the 15th, 2022, and we apologize for running behind. We had a meeting that taken us into getting late to this meeting, so thank you for your patience. Our invocation will be done by Pastor James Harper of the First Presbyterian Church of Douglasville, and then the Pledge Allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Let's pray. Gracious and sovereign God, we give you thanks this night, give you thanks for the mayor, for the city council, for the elected leadership here, for all the staff and those who labor so faithfully to make this place, this community, a place that flourishes. I pray, God, for your divine wisdom to be upon this body tonight. May they have open eyes and open ears and open hearts to you and to one another, and we ask that you grant them all the resources and encouragement and energy and creativity they need to make decisions that honor you and bring prosperity to the people in this community. I pray that you would fill their days with joy, that you would allow them to go to rest this night with the confidence that they have served you well and served this community well. And we pray that we would all have that kind of selfless attitude about how we can best serve this community, as so well modeled by our elected leadership and staff. And we pray these sayings in Christ's name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you Pastor Harper for that poignant and very thoughtful invocation. We appreciate the encouragement and the blessing on the body. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville in our legislative work session. This is a council meeting where we will not be voting tonight. It is for us to hear the information and then make our decision on Monday. If the business you're listed for, that you are here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. Just a few protocol issues, I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will only take or accept one person at a time speaking when you come to the podium. Please give us your name and address for the record. There are some cards that are on the table. If you'd like to speak, you should, we ask that you would fill those speaker cards out and hand those to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right, with the beautiful white blouse on and blue shawl. If you have any printed materials, please hand that as well to Ms. Acker, and she will make copies and disseminate those copies to us. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, please put those in silent mode or have those turned off until after the meeting. Don't forget to turn them back on. I always turn mine off at the end, like, the next day, I'm thinking, huh, I missed all these calls, but anyway. So turn those off so they'll not be disruptive during the meeting. The agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, and then that person or representative of that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation to us. Myself and council members will more than likely ask questions and try to get more information so that we can be able to make our decision on Monday. I would ask that the committee chairperson that you would address all of your comments and concerns and questions to that committee chairperson unless a council member asks you something directly. There's a maximum of 20 minutes for the applicant after that person has presented, 20 minutes for those in favor of the measure, and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. Each person has one opportunity. It's not a question and answer or debate format. We're just here to hear the information. If you have some printed materials, again, please give that information to our city clerk. I've gone over the instructions and how the meeting will flow. We will adhere to the agenda. There are printed agendas outside and/or there are some that you can follow on the screen above me, above my head. So now we'll move on with the agenda as printed. We'll move on to item number five, which is Economic Development Committee, and the chairperson for that is Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under the Economic Development Committee at this time, and that is to reappoint John Williams to serve as post-four member of the Development Authority of the City of Douglasville to a four-year term expiring July 23rd, 2026. Ms. Chelsea Jackson will help us with that. And one point of clarity, this is not the John Williams who wrote the theme to Star Wars. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just to make sure it's a different conductor. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. Of course, as Mayor Pro Tem said, Mr. John Williams is seeking to be reappointed to the Development Authority. About two years ago, Mr. Williams was appointed to serve an unexpired term. It was vacated by someone, so he's only served about a two-year term thus far, so this will be his first full term that he's seeking. He does serve on the Development Authority, and I serve as the Secretary of Treasury. He's been present for all the past meetings that we've had this year. He's very inquisitive, very proactive on the board, so staff does recommend that he's reappointed by Mayor Council.
That sounds like a sterling recommendation. And he does want to be reappointed. We're not dragging him back in. Okay, so make sure of that, too. It's done willingly and solemnly on the body. Any questions or comments from the area?
Just a quick comment. I know John, and he's phenomenal, so we are very, very lucky to have him willing to serve on this board.
Very good. I had a quick question. I know we had a vacancy. Has that been filled, or this is the person who's filling that vacancy, or do we still have an open seat?
Yes, ma'am. We still have two vacancies on that board. Mr. Williams is currently on the board. He's only been on there for about two years, so we do have two vacancies. Staff will be meeting with the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. Mayor Pro Tem soon will be reaching out to you to interview those individuals since they've never been appointed to that board, but we do have two vacancies. So we've used our social media, just word-of-mouth website to ensure that we're getting some individuals. They do have to be a city resident to be on that board, but the two individuals that have vacated that position, they filled their term and it ended this year on July 23rd, and they chose not to continue on.
Okay, so we do not have, the two vacancies are still open, the two positions are open, and people can apply?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a suspense date or end date for them to apply?
No, ma'am, until filled.
Okay, all right, so I'll make certain that I get that out there in the community. And do we have that on our social media?
Yes, ma'am.
That we have those positions open? Okay, because we usually, people are, we've been doing very well with our boards and advisory groups, so.
Yes, ma'am. We do have a few individuals that are interested, but they've never served on the board, so therefore they have to go through the interview process.
Understood. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Any other questions, comments? These are not by ward, right? We don't, the posts aren't by ward?
That's correct.
They're all at large.
Yes.
Okay. Well, as far as this appointment, reappointment goes, I think we have no comments or questions. If it's at the will of city council, we can put this on the consent agenda for next Monday. So done. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Jackson. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Finance Committee, and that is chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under finance.
Thank you, sir. Item seven, Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, we have a couple items, and I'm going to start with item A, authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement for the use and distribution of proceeds from the 2022 special purpose local option tax for the capital outlay project between the City of Douglasville and the City of Austell and the City of Villarica and Douglas County. Ms. Hampton and Ms. Jordan. Ms. Hampton first.
Only comments I have, this is our intergovernmental agreement with Douglas County for your 2022 SPOS. Legal can provide any feedback that she may have on the contract.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. The intergovernmental agreement was contemplated by the referendum resolution that the county passed back in August, August 8th, 2022, and what that referendum will do is just add this item to the November 8th ballot for the citizens of Douglas County to vote on. The county has pretty much full control over that process per state law, but that agreement contemplates an intergovernmental agreement where we're able to enter into a six-year SPOS rather than a five-year SPOS if we do enter into that IGA. The county has already adopted this at their most recent commissioner meeting, and the City of Austell has already done so as well. Villarica is similar schedule to us, so they will be passing that. Do you guys have any questions about anything that's in the agreement? It's very long and boring. I wrote a little bit of it, so I know. But there was a red line version as well where we did make some changes that were negotiated with all of the parties involved.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
No, sir. I'm excited to have the SPOS presented to the citizenry and see, and hopefully they will read the information and make their decisions. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Bless you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Jordan, so this is a six-year SPOS.
Yes.
And the percentages that were divided up between the municipalities and the county, where they set according to population, is this a, how were they set? Do you know? Was this something we've already agreed upon?
Yes, they were set according to population from the 2020 census.
Which is standard procedure then. Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Question I was going to ask.
Okay.
We're receiving 24% of the SPOS, so.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, 24.02 to be exact.
Not too shabby.
Okay, so, Madam Mayor, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday at the council pleasure.
I see some heads shaking, and no one's.
So move right along then.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to item B, adopt the resolution allowing the Housing Authority of Douglas County to exercise its power within the city limits of the City of Douglasville. Ms. Jordan first, and Mr. Fowler, get ready.
Good evening once again. The Housing Authority for Douglas County approached me, and they wanted to get a resolution in front of mayor and council. The resolution is basically that anytime, according to state law, that a housing authority wants to exercise its powers within a municipal corporation, that they need to get the permission, basically. The resolution will just say that they have to come before you and get a stamp of approval for that. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe Fowler, who's the counsel for the Housing Authority, and he's going to give just a little more information, answer any questions that you have.
Evening, everyone. Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 489 Douglasville. In the 1950s, the Housing Authority was formed here in Douglas County, and all of the facilities of the Housing Authority are located within the city limits, you may know already. And it was always our assumption that a resolution enabling that to take place, because it's a county authority, technically, they appoint the members of the board. It was always everybody's understanding that was, that had taken place. There's a project taking place off Chicago Avenue behind Golden United Methodist Church. It's a brand-new project for, I think, 164 senior housing units, and the bond lawyers apparently have checked and did not see such an enabling resolution, even though we have been operating for decades now within the city limits of the City of Douglasville. I think in the nature of a housekeeping resolution, they are looking for the resolution to be adopted that you have before you, and that simply authorizes the Housing Authority to continue to do what they've been doing since the 50s, and that is operating projects. The most recent will be, the most current is that project that I just mentioned that will be located just off Chicago Avenue, kind of west of Golden United Methodist Church. That's it, nothing more than just that. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fowler, I know you call them projects. What are they now? Baltimore Homes are still projects?
Pardon me, Sam, I didn't write that down.
Okay. Questions?
Thank, Mr. Chairman. So the powers that the Housing Authority is asking to us to acknowledge, which you've always already been, are what they say, enter into bond agreements or to do construction? What are those powers? What do they include?
It's actually just the exercise of the authority to have the Housing Authority do what it does, and that is to provide the 220 units that are operated within the city limits. What's happening now is, under the Housing Authority Act, they are adopting a bond resolution to support the project for what I just mentioned that's going in behind United Golden Methodist Church just off Chicago Avenue. So there's no involvement with respect to the financing whatsoever. There is bond financing, and that was approved by the county as required by law last week.
So you're basically no longer a road organization, so that's correct. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Fowler, for coming in. Is this the Benoit Group?
It is the Benoit Group, yes, ma'am.
And I just recall, just for the council, and I'm sure you all remember, we did have great support from Golden United Methodist Church and the Benoit Group. They came in and they had some, to get some, I don't know if it was creaks or, but anyway, all that was straightened out. So I just wanted to make certain that I was bringing to my remembrance the project, so.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. So do we need any further discussion on this on Monday, or we good with it? Okay? Okay, Madam Mayor, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, Ms. Fowler, Ms. Jordan. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Davis, and attorneys Fowler and Jordan. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts, the Vice Chair for Personnel and Organization. Who do you know who you are? I don't have my paper with me. I'm going to ask, since you're sitting over there looking so attentive, Councilmember Nicole Miller, if you don't mind taking this, this is your colleague's text to you as an in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I almost feel like we should give this to Councilman Adams, because he might feel a little left out tonight.
No, he has an mouth going on.
No, I'm off tonight.
All right. Personnel and Organization. We do have one item this evening, and that is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign contracts with Humana Inc., Anthem Life Insurance Company, Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, the Lincoln National Life Insurance Company, and Total Administrative Services Corporation for city-sponsored employee insurance benefits for the calendar year of 2023, and stating the anticipated city contribution for each such employee benefit. And I think Ms. Bean is going to go over this with us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Tia Austin Bean, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This item before you, if you recall last round, NFP, our benefits broker, along with staff, made recommendations to the mayor and council as it relates to our 2023 benefit plans. Just to review, we are recommending our medical plan, Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield remain in place, our Humana Medicare Advantage Plan to also remain in place. We are recommending a change to our dental plan to MetLife, Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, our long-term and short-term disability and life insurance provider, which is the Lincoln National Life Insurance Company. And then finally, to remain with Total Administrative Services Corporation, which is task that handles our flexible spending account as well as our health reimbursement arrangement accounts. The amounts, the monthly amounts that the city will contribute are stated in the resolution, and we are recommending no changes to employee bi-weekly payroll contributions. This is our recommendation for 2023, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have as it relates to the recommendation.
Thank you so very much. Do you guys have questions? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Miller. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bean, for the overview. I do have a couple of questions about the services and that we're providing. Congratulations again for winning for the HR department, leading us in the Best Employer Awards for Business Journal. But I did get a couple of questions from employees about Aflac. Do we not offer that anymore? Or does it?
Aflac is an ancillary coverage, so that's continuous, it's still in place. If we want to make any changes to our contract, we can bring that before you, but it's a plan that stays in place. We don't have to annually bring before you, so if you want to make changes to that, then we could. We are currently, as we review our Aflac plan and our employee feedback, what's offered, we haven't had, felt the need to bring the Aflac before you to make a change to the ancillary coverage. But again, it just stays in place until there's a recommendation to make a change.
Okay, so if there, if it's a person who's retiring and they have Aflac or any other of the services or ancillary insurances, they'll continue to have it?
Yes, ma'am. It can be converted, what they, it's called a transfer of benefits, so it's a conversion, transaction that would take place if an employee separated, they want to keep Aflac, then they would come off of the city's plan, so to speak, and they'll be responsible for individual payment and coverage.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
They need to see you. You are the HR professional expert. I just want to have a quick overview of my brain, and someone else asked me that question. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any more questions?
I do, I do have a question, Madam Chair, from Ms. Austin Bean. I don't see anything here concerning the retirees.
Just the Medicare, Humana Advantage Plan?
Yes. Is that, I don't see that, that company. I do see Humana, so it is a part of it still. Okay, so Humana is the carrier continuing.
Yes, sir. No recommendations to change.
We actually incurred a cost savings for Humana this year, and so the recommendation is to, again, keep everything in place for our retirees, and the city will incur that cost savings.
Cost savings?
Yes.
Gee, that's impressive. Thank you.
It is.
That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Were there any more questions, folks? No? Because our chair is not here, I kind of feel like we might should wait until Monday so he can have the opportunity to look over this. I know he's a little more familiar with some of these things than I am. But thank you so much for presenting to us, and if it's okay with you guys, let's wait till Monday. Thank you. All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bean, and thank you, Councilmember Miller, for being so gracious and taking this committee for me. I'll move on then to item number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under planning and development.
Thank you, sir. It's a miracle. Public Improvement and Beautification Committee chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one item this evening, and that is to authorize city staff to apply for the recycling, waste reduction, and diversion grant with the Georgia Environmental Protection Division, and we have our very own Greg Roberts on here to talk to us about that.
Good evening, everybody. Greg Roberts, Public Services Department, 6695 Church Street, since I can never remember the other address name. But that happens at this point in life, right? So this is requesting council's approval for us to submit for a grant. The maximum amount is $2 million, and we do not know where we would fall in that. It has to be submitted by the end of September, and the review period is from early October through the end of this calendar year, so we would get some sort of a response from them early 2023. And so this is related to us doing what we've talked about for a while, and we've mentioned it from a few times, about trying to do some recycling at our Cedar Mountain Road location. I feel like we're moving forward with a good plan. GMC, the engineers are working on this, and they're working with us to do this very, I wouldn't say complicated, but it takes somebody that's got the time to deal with this grant information, so they're working with us to get this filled out. And so I'm very hopeful that we could just about possibly, I'm shooting for all of it.
That's right. That's great, Mr. Providence.
Thank you. Do we have to match this grant?
So we do not have a match, so we do not have to promise them anything. But, and just sort of in a nutshell, hopefully, so there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts to this project. And in talking with the engineers with GMC, they're really excited about it. They think we can get almost all of it, and it's because of all the moving parts that we would be doing, so it's our commitment to the project that is really going to work in our favor, almost like it's a match. Does that make sense? Because they want to know we're serious about doing this project, so we're not asking them to help us buy containers or to buy a truck. We're literally trying to go into it with a facility that would serve really not just the citizens of Douglasville. That's the great thing about what we would hopefully do here.
Okay.
It would serve the entire general area.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions?
I just had a comment.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Roberts, this would be a way that we could put our facility there on Cedar Mountain Road to work, to try, by having that facility available and room there to do that, we could potentially, that would show our commitment to the grant, that we have the facility, we have the manpower, we have the equipment, correct?
Absolutely. And so. And as a reminder, you know, we have 65 acres up there. Now, not every piece of that property is developable.
Yes.
Is that a word? But, but we have enough of it, and it's an area that we've been using for years, what our employees have called for 30 years, "The Hill."
That's correct.
And so there's just, we got, we have plenty of space to do it, and you're exactly right.
Now, this is, this is the program where we would have citizens come with, in their vehicle, with their recycling to us.
That's right. And, and so there's a lot of other moving parts that we've even talked about with GMC that I won't go too far into here tonight, so it doesn't come across too much, but I think it would allow us to do other things that we do throughout the year that would help us throughout the city to serve our citizens better with recycling.
Are the funds available to use to enhance or restart or improve our recycling portion of the sanitation?
So the problem, the problem with curbside pickup recycling, and it's not a new problem, and it, and it didn't fall deaf on me. I just didn't have any answers four years ago, so, and none of us can forget the pandemic. But when you go back two, three years before the pandemic, dealing with some of the vendors, the end users that get our recycling, they're like, we're running out of stuff to do with this stuff. We can't use this, we can't use this, we can't use this. So we went from getting paid 10 years ago.
Yes, sir.
To, to basically getting paid nothing. We weren't spending, we weren't getting, so we were just picking up. And then by 2018, they started, we started getting rumblings that, hey, we're going to have to start charging you. So to tell you what I've told you a couple of years ago, we went from paying nothing to paying basically twice what our, our waste is, so we could just load it in the same truck and go take it for landfill purposes, because they were wanting $65 a ton, and we were paying, at that time, about $32 a ton for garbage. And it's more than that now because of all the cost increases. But what this facility would help us do, if we can get this going in the right direction, and I think we are, right now we are for sure, is it helps us to recycle what we really, were never really recycling, we just thought we were, because a lot of things were going in those blue bins, but it was going to garbage, because when we were taking it to where we were taking it, even when it was free for us to take it there, they're still throwing the majority of it away, because they only wanted the cardboard and the plastic one and two. And so everything else, plastics three to seven, and everything else that got in there has been been thrown away for a long time, really, but, you know, it's just, but this is the better way to do it. For anybody that would want to, we could schedule a visit to go over to Smyrna, Georgia, to their recycling facility. I mean, literally, if we could cut, cut it off of a piece of paper and bring it over here and just set it down, that's what I would really like for us to be able to have over there. It is very efficient, it's very compact, it's an in and out process, and they're recycling, they're getting, they're getting rebates back on the things they collect. So in this case, with cardboard, it would allow the city to make some changes in how we deal with cardboard. A lot of the issues that some of our businesses have, that it even comes to you guys and to you, Mayor, when people are complaining about garbage, I get there and look at the container, and it's 60% packed, the box. when people are complaining about garbage, I get there and look at the container, and it's 60% packed, the boxes in there. Well, it's been, it's going to the landfill. If we could have a a situation to where we're bailing and creating big bales of uh, it has value all of a sudden.
Yes.
It has a lot of value.
Well, you've you've cleaned the product, you you've made it all cardboard, and you've bailed it. Now you have a weighted product that you can sell it by the ton.
And when we get a truck load, they'll come get it. We don't even have to take it to them. They'll just come get the truck.
So if nothing else, it would be an incentive to hopefully involve our citizens in a recycling program where they would make the effort to separate it and carry it to recycling. We would not be doing all of that on the Cedar Mountain site.
Yeah, if 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 and and I could also take you to Pratt over in Fulton County. It a a, the process that they use is bigger than this entire complex right here. It's a huge complex trying to dump truckloads and just separate it that way. It's better when it comes to you and you can separate it on site. Because like the plastics ones and twos, we would bail those too, so those would be big bales as well. That would have value. Those are the things that these end users want.
Yeah.
But when you carry them an entire truckload and 50% of it is what they don't want.
Right.
They're just as likely to throw the entire truckload away.
I'm excited. That that's that's interesting. I hope it were successful. Thank you for your interest in your concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so thank you, Madam Chair. So you're saying this would, money would be essentially going toward creating a sorting facility? That's essentially what it is?
It it's a recycling center.
Yeah, but I mean, it it the primary objective is to sort the the materials into different categories. And then and then we still have, then it's our responsibility then to sell it or or whatever, you know, to to pass it on to in into the system wherever it goes from there.
Generally speaking, yes.
So is is this like capital funds? It would it would actually, the mon- if we get the $2 million, what does it actually go toward creating the the facility itself or?
It'll go toward the expense of building the facility.
Okay, and then we will be responsible for paying to operate the facility, which hopefully we'll pay for itself if it's done right.
Yes. Yes, this is to help us to get the facility.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope.
Exciting.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I think we talked about this before.
So while it hadn't been talked about a lot, there's been a lot going on for months.
Yeah, it is.
It just takes a while.
It's really exciting, though. I know people are constantly asking when we're going to be able to bring the recycling back online. So thank you very much for staying on top of that for us.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, that is, oh, no, right quick, because you needed our approval to to do that. Are you guys all good with them submitting for the grant then? Okay, then let's go ahead and put that on the consent agenda. That's okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Madam Mayor, that is all we have this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Mr. Roberts, we appreciate uh that information. We'll move on then to item number 12, which is Public Relations Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Sam Davis.
No uh business at this time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Would you mind taking Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee as the vice chair, Councilman Davis?
At this time, we have no business. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm. Do we have any other business to come before council tonight from the elected body? Any announcements or anything? Okay, I don't see any. Then we'll move on to updates from our city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dodson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our chief of police, before I let him talk, thank you, chief, for um spearheading the meeting we had earlier this week with ourselves, the cinema, Regal Cinema, and the mall, Arbor Place Mall management, to try to get an understanding and and prevent um what happened a a couple of weeks ago with the um disruption and fight at the mall. So we look forward to continuing that conversation, but thank you for um calling that meeting. It was very fruitful. It was very informative. But anyway, do you have anything, chief?
Uh, no, ma'am.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Um, only thing to report is Chelsea and I will be at a conference uh next week, so Ms. Callen will be running the meeting. She has y'all taken care of.
Woo, the crown, the crown is moved. Oh, gosh, she's smiling. Thank you so much, city manager. Too much. Comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward uh to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about anything to main to uh business in the city of Douglasville. No? Don't take us, you want to say anything? You you getting your papers together? Okay.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind while the citizen is waiting, well, we will wait afterwards. I do have one uh staff item to report. Greg Roberts has something to mention to you all.
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's good to see you.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is Kelvin Harris. I stay 6637 Copper Court, Douglasville, Georgia, right behind Hunter Park.
Yes, sir.
One of my issues I have uh with New Horizon Community, we are kind of, we are kind of confused about the 92 project.
Uh-huh.
Uh, that's why I was checking the phone, because Pastor Hobel and a lot of the other young ladies was saying that we went over there and looked at them apartments, which is town home condominium. We was told that they was going to have slots for business was going to be up on them. That's not what's going on. So New Horizon feel like we being bamboozled. We went by Jesse Davis Park. We ain't seen no grounds for tearing up or any on this side of the track. So what we are trying to figure out, I know we been behind. I understand that due to COVID, we been behind.
Yes, sir.
But it's always delay on our side of the tracks. Uh, and I just want some understanding. I just want clarity.
Yes, sir.
Uh, reaching out for the minutes of contractor, whoever said they was going to build these townhomes, because like I say, that's what we what we was promised.
Yes, sir. I'm not exactly.
And it's great concern with New Horizon community over there.
Yes, sir. I'm not exactly certain about uh the development. I guess it's a private development, but we can have an answer as far as that's concerned.
I'll get a copy of the development plan.
Yeah, can I answer? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hi, um, Mr. Calvin. Thank you so much. I'm glad that you um came in. Yeah, I spoke with um Mr. Calvin, I call him Kevin, yeah, last week. He called me in regards to the um project on 92, very close to the fire station, like across. So what I just, he asked me the question in regards to um economic development around that um development. And what I mentioned to him, and I did contact um our city manager um quickly by email, requesting a copy of the um drawings or just a copy of the project itself to be emailed to um Mr. Calvin, and I'll let Marsha make a comment in just a moment. But anyway, what I mentioned to him is when Mr. Jesse, the consultant, was speaking to us, there those that project is townhomes and flats. And they uh his understanding and what he's saying to me is from other residents in New Horizons, thought that it was going to be like lofts with retail on the bottom. And I tell him that was not correct. That is what's going on at Town Green. And um so I had a meeting today with Ms. Hampton in regards to other um, just other stuff that I usually try and meet with her often. But I'd like for her to make a comment in regards, so when will he get the?
Development plan?
The documents that I requested. We talked today and then if there are other concerns. And as as relates to economic development, Mr. Jesse and the the community, when he did meet with us, did talk about the surrounding areas close to that development, possibly looking at spots that the city and, um, you know, we could speak with um owners who may be interested in doing some economic development. So just making sure we clear up the um, clear that up. Councilman Davis, we haven't, he and I haven't spoken today, but no, we were at that meeting at Jesse Davis. Um, so I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Um, yes, ma'am, and and following our meeting, I think there may be some confusion between um a planning study meeting and then what was actually community meetings related to the development plan for the residential development on 92. Um, APD did a community meeting talking about strategies for developments on the north side. I will provide a copy of that, and that was just overall concepts of what could be done. The development that's currently under construction, um that is 100% residential. I believe it maybe um is probably one of the highest density residential projects in the community that you all, mayor and council of his own. But I'll also provide a copy of that development plan as well, but there's no commercial development associated with that residential development, that I do know. Um, but I can get a copy of the plan as well as the concept plans. The development plan is actually what's being constructed. The concept plan is actually what is uh we what we utilize to provide to developers to look to attract them to do projects on the north side. It's not necessarily something that actually will be done. It's something that we use to recruit.
Correct, and they are not apartments. They are townhomes and flats, just to make sure.
Are there any minutes on this?
Yes, that's our our city manager was just saying that she's going to make sure you get those copies. Um, I did request them after you called me.
Yes, ma'am.
So and the plan so that you can see, and when there's another meeting, I think coming up with New Horizons, actually next Monday.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to come here because they was very concerned about that.
Sure.
And like I say, I I I try to be highly visible in the community. But we got to start paying close attention to Highway 92 on that side of the track. Because like I say, we pay tax dollars just like everybody else.
Yes, sir.
And it's time for that side of the track to grow just like Douglasville is growing. Don't leave us out.
We're not.
We have a voice.
Yes, sir.
We do have a voice. And we feel we are being left out.
Well, I'm not going to argue with you. I think perception could be reality, but I will tell you factually, Willingworkers Park is phenomenal. I don't know if you've been there. So it's not that um in the past five years that things have not been moving, you know, in the New Horizons areas, dirt moving everywhere. And the citizens voted last year, the entire city, Tributary, downtown Chapel Hill, Arbor Station, everywhere, uh to tax themselves $25 million for Jesse Davis Park. So things are moving. We just cut the ribbon for Highway 92 maybe three weeks ago with Congressman Scott. So uh maybe it's not moving fast enough. You know how government moves, kind of slow.
I understand.
But things are definitely being done. So um I just think, just kind of look a little bit different from different glasses. Even the the project, the Highway 92, the the tracks aren't there anymore. That's an impediment to get from the north side all the way through downtown to get to to I-20. So um so those are factual things that's happening, and it's it's a lot going on. Maybe not as fast as you would like. I want to go faster too, but we do have some some development going on. And and the the plans will be to spur people to come in, just like we um can put the plans out for the tax allocation district. We can't just twist the arm and make them come, but we can try to have some honey and have them come, have some some development. You're welcome. Thank you for coming, for your concerns. Yes, sir. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? All right, well, if we don't have anything else, then and we don't have any other business. Oh, yes, ma'am. Oh, the city manager, Mr. Roberts, we're doing, who's on first, who's on second?
Just a a quick update. It's really not an item, but um I I told Ms. Hampton, we probably need to let, let's bring it to your attention.
Yes, sir.
So if you've noticed, on the east end of Church Street, there's construction uh going on, and that's for the uh Water Sewer Authority. And um so that's Ronnie Jones' um construction doing that work. So this is one of the pipe bursting projects that they've done over the years. Um, and so they started at Fairburn Road last week, and they're getting a little more uh in-depth in the project now. And they're doing a lot of their precuts on the asphalt. So what they're having to do is uh close each block individually. And this is not a huge issue for us right now. I'll get to what my point was. But they're they're closing each block, so you'll notice probably starting more next week, you'll notice, oh, that block between Adair and Duncan is closed, or between Duncan and James is closed. And it'll be closed for the day. It'll be open later in the day for the evening, so it'll be passable, but during the day it'll be closed. Probably each little section will be closed about three days at a time. And then that means the section uh between Church Street, say, for example, on Adair from Church Street to 78, that section will be closed.
Yes, sir.
Uh, wherever they need to do the work. So this is where they're doing the pipe bursting projects. They're doing some waterline projects, so they're having to renew a lot of services. They're updating and upgrading the sewer line. But when they get up here to Campbellton Street, on the west side of the Campbellton Street intersection at the Regions Bank.
Mm-hmm.
So they're they will have to work those sections the same way. So our discussion was how to handle that during the daytime because those other ends, you can at least drive around the block and make your way to where you want to go. But if you close the section between Campbellton and, for example, O'Neill Plaza, you can get around, but it's going to take you a lot longer, and it's just going to be a huge inconvenience for all the businesses in the area. So um the request was to ask the council or present it to you and get a feedback uh if we're good for doing night work in that area. So they would start that project more like 9:00 PM, 8:00 PM. Um, probably only, uh I'll have to talk to them about whether they start on Sunday night rather than trying to work through the weekend, but start like a Sunday night through Thursday night kind of thing. We're busy, trust me. We're busy downtown. Uh, for anybody that thinks Douglasville's dead downtown, we're not dead on Friday and Saturday, for sure. Um, and so um so they're not doing that on those nights, but it would require closing those blocks the same way between Campbellton and Price Avenue. And then when they're finished with that section between Price and Bowden, and they would do that work during the night. That work would take about three weeks maximum.
Hmm, okay.
Um, there there won't, there there shouldn't be a lot of noise. There'll be three nights where the most noise would be, where they're doing the jack and bore and that kind of thing. But um generally, after that, it just would be the rumble of the tractors and and generators and that type thing. So I know it's not a great choice either way. We don't want to shut business down during the day. We don't want to keep citizens up at night with the equipment, so it's sort of a balancing thing. And we can get, between myself and Ms. Hampton, you can give us feedback over the weekend.
Okay, we can. Or right now, she says. So she wants a consensus. It's it's kind of, I'm nervous. I don't want people to be mad at me.
What about the backup alarms?
But when the sewer line fails, everybody's going to be mad.
Now, that's true.
Because it has to be done. This is a very old uh line that has to be replaced. And fortunately, they're doing it um with pipe bursting, where they do not have to open dig except where they have an issue. This is where they pull the material through the project.
Yes, sir.
And then they get it to each end, and then they they pump it up and it bursts the pipe open. If you were to, if you were to Google "pipe bursting," I promise you, you will get a good demonstration of a video. It's amazing. It's awesome. It's just just modern technology. Uh, 40 years ago, we would have to open the whole street up to replace that pipe, but not now.
What about the uh reverse alarms on all the equipment?
I can discuss that with them, but you know, that's sort of an OSHA thing.
Right.
So if they cut it off at some request.
But I mean, it'll it'll have to be there. That was my point.
It would be there, and they're very loud. Um, so.
Well, count our transportation chair. Dr. Burdenley said when we were trying to get 92 together, come at night. We'll pay you extra money, so whatever it takes, if we can expedite the project and keep things moving.
It's definitely less disruption if they if they do it at nighttime.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will give them the thumbs up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I wanted to, you kind of jarred my memory when we were talking about things going on. I did get a um request. I spoke to a group this week. It's not for you, Mr. Greg. I'm just in general. Sp- I had spoken to a group earlier this week, and they were saying about things to do and all of that in the communities. So I wanted to um announce that we have Screen on the Green tomorrow. I know somebody's looking at me. What time is is Screen on the Green? Emily, or Mr. Bass? At dusk? Okay, so with Soul is the movie, and that, yes, that's a cute movie. So that is at dusk. It's going to be at Hunter Park. But um and um, not Batman, but our our citizen talking to us about things going going on on the north side. We are soccer, um not soccer, but volleyball, girls' volleyball, has been very successful. So with a parent who, you know, wanted things to do, we offer the Tiger Cubs, basketball, youth baseball, soccer, kickball, girls' volleyball, tennis, gloves, not drugs, boxing, Boundary Waters for swimming, skate parks, teen groups. And we have um Mr., because we don't, I mean, we can't really raise your children, the government's responsibility, but we can give uh help with recreational services. Mr. Bass has even gone as far as doing esports league. And so if you wanted to join that, and it's middle, adult, and beyond, anyone who wants to do um esports league. Our Screen on the Green, and then October 7th, we have the Plaza Bingo. which someone's wife comes there. Councilman Estes, we have a great time at Plaza Bingo, which is fun. And then yoga and Bark, Bark a Ween. Now, what in the world is that? Saturday, you have to dress your dog up. Come on, Mr. Bass, talk to me. You dress your dog up in a Halloween costume or something? You don't have cats? I have Oreos at home. Oreo's going to have hers feelings hurt.
Yes, ma'am. It's a Halloween competition for dogs. Yes, ma'am.
So cats are, you're being prejudiced against the cats?
We haven't tapped into cats yet. Maybe in the future, but right now, we're starting with dogs.
I know, I know. Thank you so much, Mr. Bass. So Bark a Ween, Bark a Ween is Saturday in Worthen Park, the 8th of October. So we have lots and lots going on in the city, and we're excited to offer recreational opportunities for the community. That made me laugh. Any other business to come before council tonight? If not, then Bark a Ween, if not, then this meeting is adjourned.